Did I do that?
Yeah.
Good morning and welcome to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, November 11th, 2014 work session. We'll recognize our invited guests here today, county officials, city officials. Let's say Mayor Davy back here in the back. Am I missing anyone else? Thank you all for being here. I'll remind you to turn off all cell phones, necks, pedals, and pagers. It does interrupt production of the program. This morning for invitation, please, a longtime friend of mine, our Paulding County Fire Chaplain, John Turner. Would you stand with me, Greg?
Father, listen, pray, please. Father, we are thankful for this day that you've given us. Thankful for all the blessings we've received in the county and our state and our country. Lord, on this special day of Veterans' Day, we stop to remember and to thank all of our vets for all they've done for this county, for all they've done for our country, for those who fought, who gave their lives. We thank you today, Father, for the privilege of being able to be here with our fellow citizens and countrymen and brothers. I ask you today, your blessings upon this meeting, everything said and done will always bring you honor and bring you glory. But we all need wisdom and knowledge, and I pray for that today, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
We're going to pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Brother Turner. On our announcement of supporting commissioner, I would like to present a public safety appreciation award to firefighters Frank Wyatt, Jeremy Prager, Russell Wazik, Jacob McDaniel, the Paulding County Fire Department. You guys come up front here.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you very much for allowing us to come today to recognize these fine gentlemen here. We don't get a chance to do this as much as we'd like, and this is a great forum to do it. On the afternoon of July the 27th, Paulding County Fire Station Number Five was dispatched to an unconscious person in a vehicle which ran off the roadway. Firefighters Frank Wyatt, Jeremy Prager, Russell Wazik, and Jacob McDaniel arrived on the scene quickly to find the truck off the roadway into some bushes. Upon approaching the vehicle, they found a male subject in the vehicle, not breathing and without pulse. The firefighters quickly extricated the man from the truck and began lifesaving measures to revive him. These personnel worked tirelessly as a team in an attempt to revive the patient by establishing an airway with a medical device, performing chest compression and ventilation, or CPR, and using an AED. After initiating CPR, they were able to obtain a weak pulse, but the patient lost her pulse again. The crew was persistent and continued to work as a team and was able to restore strong pulses and respirations on the patient. According to the American Heart Association, survival rate for sudden cardiac arrest is very low, ranging from five to 10 percent, and after every minute, the chance of survival decreases significantly. The fast action these well-trained responders were direct result of the patient with a prognosis of a full recovery, is what walking around today. A full recovery. We're lucky to have these four men, and they are professionals and a fine example of top personnel we have working here today. Thank you for your service. Their family can come up as well.
Huh? How about it? Don't scare them today.
I can't see the chair, and I can't see the floor.
Is this okay?
Yeah.
I can't believe you can say that.
Um, is there kind of a message for one of y'all?
They're good in the back. It's happened before.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all. Yeah, until we all work that together at the gym. Again, thank the families for being here. We appreciate it. Sacrifice on the family's part as well as the public safety. Thank you very much. Drop back to the minutes, October 28th, 2014 work session minutes and October 28th, 2014 work session minutes are available for review. Now I'd like to take some time out to celebrate Veterans' Day. 11:11 at 11 o'clock is when we always recognize our veterans, both living and dead. Primarily, it's to recognize the living and the sacrifice that they have made. And, you know, there's no bigger sacrifice than that, to sacrifice for your country. And it's why we're free, we're free to meet like this, and we're free to have elections that we just had, and it's all because of a veteran's sacrifice. I'll read a something penned by an unknown veteran. A veteran is someone who, at a point in his or her life, wrote a blank check made payable to the United States of America for an amount up to and including their life. If you're a veteran, would you stand and let us recognize you? Thank you all for your service.
Amen.
There are no invited guests. Bid awards discuss actions awards are purchased of nine cahos from Harley Chevrolet based on the state contract price of $33,325 each for a total of $299,925.
Good morning.
Good morning. The sheriff doesn't show up when he's begging for money?
The sheriff did. But he has been waiting patiently on the state to issue a state contract price for these cahos, and they did that in the recent past. And he's requesting to purchase nine. Five of them using swap dollars, and four of them will be used for transport, and they'll be purchased with jail fines, which are additions to fines that are collected and can only be used for inmate purposes.
So it's not from general M&amp;O money, but it's from money that it collects from fines and so?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any questions? And if this is, the purchase will be from Harley, as well as the state contract.
What is the state price? State contract?
Yes, sir. State price. The $33,325 each is the price.
And the state contract, they actually each year put out these specific items all over the state, the country, and they establish the lowest possible price.
Yes, and comparing this year and last year, it's about $200 less than what it was last year.
Marshal Department, do we have anybody signing up wishing to speak? We have three wishing to speak, Chris Byron on Old York Road, Kirsten Liberty on Madison Road, and Kathy Helms on IGA, all area on that agreement. Reports from committees? Reports from committees and departments, there's none. We now have public participation on agenda items, so Chris Byron.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Byron speaks, there was something I would like to ask you to consider at the end of business today. We have a couple of photographs we'd like to show you from some recent damage to Lido Park. That's very recent, a lot on your agenda, if you're in there, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll add that to the agenda. And these were just vandals?
Yes.
Good morning. Today, you'll be voting on whether or not to adopt an amendment on the intergovernmental agreement that's between the county and the airport authority. The purpose of this amendment is to satisfy the necessary changes required by the FAA in order to gain their approval of this intergovernmental agreement that you voted to accept on September 9th of this year. This necessary step plays a major role in determining the outcome of this contract, a step that clearly says this contract is not yet a done deal. It is on that premise that I ask you to reconsider moving forward with this contract, a contract that has the potential and the likelihood of strapping myself and the Paulding taxpayers with an unbearable tax burden that puts our lives and our futures in jeopardy. The residents are bewildered. We don't understand why you've chosen to endorse this contract. We don't understand your motives. We don't understand why you're putting your agenda before ours. We don't understand why you're so willing to sell out your constituents. We don't understand why you continue to say it's for the betterment of this county despite public outcry. We don't understand why you haven't bothered to ask for our opinion, the opinion of the very people you swore to serve and to protect. We are not your children. We are your constituents, constituents who have legal rights, whether you choose to acknowledge that or not. We are the very taxpayers who financially support and sustain this county and who will be left to deal with your mess long past your time in office should you approve this IGA amendment. We are your bosses, yet for some unknown reason, you've chosen to ignore that fact and instead resort to underhanded acts like approving this absurd IGA in order to circumvent us and our wishes. What could possibly be so important to each of you that you're willing to ruin not only this county, but your reputations and the reputations of your families as well? We don't understand. Or do we? Commissioners, it's not too late to stop this unscrupulous act of handing our greatest county asset and unlimited tax dollars over to a handful of people, people who are undeserving and a detriment to Paulding County. It's not too late to redeem yourselves by proceeding in an ethical and a fair manner. It's not too late to save this county and its future. We want you to care more about us than yourselves. We want you to see the big picture and not be blinded by the promise of high dollars and unrealistic dreams. We want you to be the leaders you promised you'd be and not the ones you've chosen to be. On behalf of the Paulding County residents, both airport opponents and supporters alike, I ask you to do the right thing by stopping this IGA from moving forward today by voting no to this amendment. I ask that you conduct yourselves as the good Christian men you claim to be. You all speak about your love for this county. We ask that you prove it by putting our money where your mouth is. Here's the bottom line, I'm going to end with this. Please remember that the day of judgment is coming, when God will judge the secrets of men by Jesus Christ. That's Romans 2:16, look it up. Do you all look forward to this, or do you see it as a threat that day? At God's judgment, there will be no higher court of appeal. There will be no lawyers. There will be no Superior Court, municipal court, and the like, should the verdict be not to your liking. Think about it, and thanks.
Kirsten Liberty?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kirsten Liberty, and I have three beautiful, innocent, trusting children some of you may have seen here occasionally. Their father and I saved for 10 years to purchase our home in Paulding County, where we've worked hard to create our own little piece of heaven. We're not alone. There are many families just like us that have worked just as hard. That piece of heaven is now being threatened by your attempt to steal it from us through your promotion of the commercialization of our airport. One by one, the residents have come before you, asking, begging you to stop this madness. We face each day without the joy and the gratitude we have worked so hard for. We awaken fear, anxiety, and sadness, again, like so many other Paulding families. Our lives have been put on hold as we desperately try to hold onto our hopes and dreams. Where's the fairness in that? How can you possibly justify ruining so many lives, which whether you're willing to admit it or not, commercialization would do? Your plan has the potential to cause devastation and suffering to so many Paulding citizens, and why you're willing to turn a blind eye to us is beyond our comprehension. Today's Veterans' Day. My husband served with honor to allow citizens to have their voices heard and to speak out against government tyranny. I'm positive we all appreciate what these brave men and women have done for our country, including my husband. We recognize the sacrifices they have made, both while serving and throughout their lives, since the scars of military service never go away. Please don't make a mockery of their service and their selfless dedication to this country by turning your back on the democracy they fought for, along with countless others, have, including those that gave their lives. The democracy some of you and your ancestors also fought for, the democracy that should be alive in Paulding County. You have been given another chance to reconsider your position on the IGA by presenting FAA requirements that you must meet. This should be considered a gift from a power much bigger than you and I. These requirements are both an obstacle and an opportunity. Please do the right thing this time. It is not too late to change your mind and vote no to the IGA amendment. Please discard the whole idea. Do not turn your backs on us again, not on the very people who trusted you to always govern with our best interest as your guide, the very people whose families have sacrificed much to have their voices heard. We all know, you're more than aware of what the majority of this county wants. Last week's over 23,000 voters voted for anti-commercialization candidates. They sent their message loud and clear. Three anti-commercial commissioners won because of their opposition to the commercialization of this airport. Please stop trying to circumvent these incoming commissioners and the Paulding taxpayers by reversing your decision today and stopping this unconscionable contract from moving forward, a contract that has the ability to destroy Paulding County. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're friends. I've been here a lot, and I want to take the opportunity to thank the veterans that have, that sit on the board and those that are present. Thank you. Because of you, I have the opportunity to do this. And I want you to listen to what these other people said. You really, we ask that you only pay attention to the voters. Like Kirsten said, over 20,000 people voted that were anti-air, voted for anti-airport candidates. This is no longer just a local issue. You won't listen to us. You're not here. We stand up here, month after month, talking to you, begging you, wearing our shirts, non-commercial airport. We vote, okay? We're not talking, you won't listen to us, so we're not talking to our state representatives and our federal representatives, too. We're not going to stop. The plaque that's on the front of this courthouse is a perfect example. Not one of those people that was involved in building this courthouse that was against what the taxpayers wanted and that airport are no longer in service. They were put out of office the very next election, except for one, God rest his soul. All we're asking is that you listen to us, not George Clooney or a New York company. They can't vote for you. They don't live in Paulding County. You have the power today to stop this intergovernmental agreement. Think about this. This may be the most important vote you ever take. Thank you.
We have consent agenda, and we have seven items. Consent agenda item number one, adopted 2015 Paulding County Board of Commissioners, regular meeting scheduled. Is there any discussion on that? Number two, approved proposal, application and public hearing dates for the planning commission, zoning board of appeals, the stream buffer development waiver review committee, and the development waiver review committee for the 2015 calendar year. And you put these out, and we have those, any discussion on those? Number three, approve the proposed planning and zoning division fee schedule for 2015 calendar year. And this is also something you put out to us. And there's no changes in those? These only an additional cell tower or administrative? Number four, approve and execute the CUSA valid regional services agreement for replacing an existing community service vehicle. Mike and Chuck, absent, anything you want to add to that?
I asked Parks and Recreation Director Michael Justice for item number four and five. He's familiar with those. Do you have any questions, Chuck?
Y'all have any questions?
This strictly replaces three that we've got. It's no real, no change in our maintenance and operation. We just, they're giving us three new buses, or maintenance.
Yes, sir, that's correct. The other three remain with us. We surplus them, we'll get service, whatever we choose to do. The stipulation is, as always, that the maintenance of the vehicle, the fuel, those sorts of things do fall to Paulding County. I think the vehicles themselves are free.
So the other three we keep because I assume they got over $200,000 miles?
That's correct.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
You say there, timber cell agreement with W&amp;W Timber Incorporated for thin operations with Paulding Forest Track. This is something Chuck had been working on, and you're familiar with what he's done there?
Yes, sir, I've been working along with him there. When the property was purchased there, this is the property that's included as part of the WMA. Part of the responsibility that returned to the county was a maintenance program to maintain the health of the forest. Couple of months ago, you guys approved an agreement with CUSA Forestry Services to help us along that line. Where we are now is it's step one of what will be a three-step process. This is basically just thinning. It is not harvest. This is just thinning to promote the health. Step two is an additional thinning, and step three would be the actual harvest that takes place.
We've been with state leaders in the Southern. They highly recommend it. We may be a little bit behind in getting this done.
Very far behind, actually. And we are working, this is going with a DNR prescribed plan. They are helping us along since, I'm not a forester, Chuck was not a forester, so we've got a lot of direction from DNR when it comes to this, and the biologist there, they're helping us as they prescribe their plan to help us with a plan of our own. This is just step one of that process. Any fees that are generated? There is a fee, I think it was $38,000 that we'll receive. That's the bid award fee. The contract price, based on thinning, of course, can go up and down, the maximum number there, I think it's about $65,000, $66,000, somewhere in there, it's in the contract. It should be pointed out that those funds, by the nature of that original DNR contract, have to go back into the property.
Or care, maintenance, creating, trail?
Replanting, reseating, road improvements, it can even be used to purchase adjacent property and resize the WMA.
Now, you said, so at the awarding of the bid, we'll receive a check of $38,000?
That's correct.
And once the harvest is done, and it's all weighed, and it's by the ton, and it's calculated, based on that thing, we could receive up to $65,000?
That's correct. The contract length for this thing goes through August of 2016. There are some dates and times that they are not allowed to go in there during the hunting seasons, things of that nature. So the, you know, the payments will be put in trust. We can receive those every time they make one. We can receive a quarterly, whatever the tax wishes are, if your wishes is what we can do. We can wait till the end of the contract, but it will be kept in trust therefore during the process.
Any other question? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Number six, designate Friday, December 26th, 2014 as an official holiday for the Paulding County Board of Commissioners offices and employees. Mike, we've looked at this, and it's hard to get work out of folks after Christmas Day and then come back for one day, and then you're off.
It's a function of the calendar. Christmas falls on Thursday. You already have the 24th and 25th as designated county holidays. You would open up for one day and then shut down the weekend. Obviously, there'd be lots of requests for, to be off for that particular day. I don't think you'll see an awful lot of business conducted that day. This happened, the last time this happened was in 2008, and the commission decided to formally designate the 26th as a formal holiday. You are required to do that because you're the governing authority for Paulding County, and the court system cannot close its doors unless the governing authority designates a holiday. So that's one. And the state employees within the court system are out anyway? The state employees have already been, this has already been done for the state employees, so officers like the DA's office was already going to be closed anyway, so. And the tax office and those offices support this? Yes. You may be surprised to find out, I haven't had a single constitutional officer opposing this magic. In fact, I've had a few of them pushing me pretty hard to get this on the agenda, but yeah, I think, I think this is a good thing. It will, but it does require your formal adoption and recognition of a holiday to close the court.
Any more questions? Number seven, authorize the chairman to execute the Jifa loan modification documents, WS12AL07WS, to reflect the changes in the intended expenditure.
Commissioners, I sent you an email on this a few days ago. Several weeks ago, before he left, Michael Carter was working with Jifa on, if you recall, it's been some time ago, over a year, y'all adopted the very first Jifa loan. It was for the preliminary engineering planning loan, $2.86 million. The amendment to this agreement with Jifa does not affect that. It does not affect the terms, it does not affect the rate, it doesn't affect the amount. When that agreement was put in place, there were four areas that we could expend funds, and we had to guess where we would spend those funds. Well, it become apparently obvious that mitigation credits and easement should not come out of the planning money. So we are moving the mitigation credits fund, which is $900,000 and $480,000 for easement acquisition, and rolling it up into the fund for engineering, geotechnical, and surveying. And it simply allows us to submit those invoices and be repaid. Some of those invoices are pending now. So once you take your axe and the caravans on, this will go to Atlanta, and the Jifa will reimburse us for money that we've already spent. That's really the only change here. Instead of four categories, it's going to be two.
We've had them come in and speak before. It's the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority.
That's correct. Just, in reality, we owe the money, and we can either use, which we have three loans that we've signed or we've approved. We've only drawn on this one loan. Correct, that's correct.
All right, and what this allows you to do instead of having to draw on a second loan for my bill that you have today, you just keep drawing on this one loan. And you're spending any more money. It's just, it makes more sense to have one loan instead of two.
It's the exact same dollar amount. It's just we're reducing it from four different categories to two categories.
Any more questions? Would you want to move any of these items to a regular session? Hearing none. There's no old business under new business. Number one, discuss action to approve First Amendment to the intergovernmental contract between Paulding County and the Paulding County Authority for the operation of Silver Tompkins Field at Paulding Northwest Atlanta Airport adjacent.
Commissioners, on October 30th, 2014, county received a letter from the FAA. This was a letter from Winsome Lenford, the manager of the airports division, Southern Region. This letter granted conditional approval to adding the airport authority as a cosponsor on the airport improvement program grants that has been much discussion about in past meetings. The letter indicated it was conditional approval upon satisfaction of five conditions. One of those conditions is before you today and it's an amendment to the IGA between the airport authority and the county. The FAA requested that the IGA be amended so that the IGA is subordinate to any federal requirements for the AIP grants. So in essence, what they're saying is to the extent you have anything in the IGA that conflicts with federal requirements for the AIP grants, that the IGA will take a second chair to the federal requirements. It will be placed essentially in second place and any federal requirements will trump. This proposed amendment just acknowledges that and says that the IGA is going to make, it's going to be amended to make it subordinate to the federal requirements. The resolution takes no other action other than that amendment. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion?
Okay, so this is in, it's not that they went through the IGA to approve it. This is in connection with approving the grant to do the environmental assessment. And in order for them to, what you're saying, in order for them to complete that grant application, fully accept it, fund the environmental assessment, they're asking that the IGA be amended to subordinate to all federal laws or requirements. And is that in English kind of what I'm saying?
That's, that's kind of close. The, the FAA letter specifically on whether or not the airport authority will be a cosponsor for AIP grants. One of those grants is for the environmental assessment. But this is, uh, this is what they said. In order for us to allow the airport authority to be recognized by the FAA as a cosponsor, we want to make sure that you all, Board of Commissioners and airport authority, recognize that your intergovernmental agreement will be subordinate to the federal requirements. And it certainly has bearing on that EA grant.
So it's on any grant?
Yes.
To make them an actual cosponsor?
So actually, if we had written the grant or written the IGA specifically why the FAA wanted it, we would have included that wording in the beginning.
Sort of just kind of an omission on our part?
Well, it's, it's, you could, you could phrase it that way. I would phrase it as, you know, as we go forward in this process, to the extent, you know, we're working with three levels of government, local, state, and federal, we're going to come across a situation where we're going to have to change part of what we're doing in order to be compliant with whatever typically the FAA is going to require. As far as when we drafted this IGA to begin with, you know, my, my legal opinion would be that anything we put together at the local level, to the extent there's a federal requirement that conflicts with what we've done locally, there's a strong argument that the federal requirement already preempts something at the local level. But this would certainly formalize that and that's what the FAA asks to see put in writing approvals.
You know, when I look back over the past year, the last six months especially, and I look at the information that was brought to this board through our airport director, the information that was brought to this board through our steering committees, the information that was brought to the board from the airport authority. We talked about sponsorship, who owns this and who owns that. It, um, you really go back and look at the meetings and you look at the videos, it's amazing what we really didn't know or what somebody said we do. That may not make sense to some of y'all right now, but what I mean is there was a lot of things that were told us that, hey, this is the way it is. We're a sponsor, you're a sponsor, so, so forth and so on. A lot of information was given to us. When you look back at the videos, not all the information was correct. The three citizens that spoke this morning are correct. And citizens are going to be impacted. We're elected to represent the citizens. Whether we agree with what their views are or not, we're elected to represent citizens. It was, it was said that there's going to be lawsuits on the environmental assessment, no matter who we pick. However, we went ahead and my vote wasn't fair. I, I voted against it, but we still went ahead and we voted to accept the Michael Baker group to do the environmental assessment of which, if this is approved this afternoon at 2:00, that will move forward. I don't know why we would do that knowing the connection to knowing who did the first environmental assessment. I think this is an opportunity to stop this. I think the citizens have spoke very loud. I think a lot of us up here on this board in our hearts know that. For me, I don't know how we can go against the citizens, against their wishes. When all the numbers come out the same, when I look back, all the way back in 74, I'm going to say it, in 99, and I look at the elections, I look at the, uh, the door knocking and the polls, it still comes out to 70%. Sometimes it's more. Sometimes it might be 68, but that's where it's at, 68 to 78 percent. And, um, we represent the people of Paulding County. Just asking y'all to deny this. We'll need to move forward with it. We need to do what's right for our community. We need to do what's right for the people for today, tomorrow, and the future. Working together and doing what's right for the folks, the people that are here now, the people that have helped build this county. That's the right thing to do. It's just as simple as that. It might be, it can sound elementary, but let's just, we just got to do the right thing. I just, I just, I'm asking for y'all to deny this. I'm asking for y'all to do the right thing. Let's get down to doing the business of the people of Paulding County. Working together, we can continue to make Paulding County a great place to live. Working like this, that's not the legal case. I think we have to recognize, I think we have to recognize that, um, Delta and their lawyers and Cassine Reed and his lawyers have spent between $300,000 and $500,000 spent in Paulding County on elections. Then they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on attorneys to find this. If anyone on record is saying they do not want us to be successful, all the money belongs to the city of Atlanta. Now, I adhere to this airport and I promise to make it be successful. General Aviation was going through a very successful spell, so commercial indicated there were opportunity there for us. And that's simply all that we're looking at is this opportunity. But to say that we can't have it by the city of Atlanta and Delta years from now, if we don't do something and be in control ourselves, then we'll be looking at Delta and the city of Atlanta on their own 10,000 acres out here doing stuff that we have no control of. So, you know, as we're looking at this, we fully intend to do the intent of the people they elected us to do, and that's to move forward and make a asset, a $50 million asset, very, very successful.
You don't own that airport, we do.
Damn, you're out of order.
The citizens, I'm leaving.
Please ask this lady.
The citizens own that airport.
You are out of order. Please ask her.
Like she's not going to be more ready.
Number two, discuss actions.
I got a question about the, to focus on what we're actually asking to do. Which on September the 23rd, we passed Resolution 14 dash 29, which formally requested the FAA to make Paulding County Airport to a bond. Okay? That formal request, then they have gone through their process to honor that formal request. And their reply back to that formal request is, you said there were five things, but what's before us today is one thing you mentioned to the IGA that says that, that the IGA said that we subordinate to federal law.
That is correct.
Oh, just for clarification, not to be contentious by any means, but as far as some historical facts, in 1974, there were less than 30,000 people in Paulding County. In 1999, there were about 80,000 people and now I believe it's 156,000. So the difference there is 76,000 additional people that didn't vote in 99. And by the way, in 99, they voted on a bond for $3 million to buy the property. And you throw $3 million on any referendum and your eyes get pretty big when you're a taxpayer, mine too. But the FAA funded 95% of that and the Paulding County government funded 2.5% of that. So again, just for points of clarification, Paulding County did not have to pay $3 million for that, the bonds, or they wouldn't have had to even if they'd been voting in at that time. So the population has changed. There are a lot of new citizens in and, you know, I'm affected a little bit when you talk about representing the citizens. When, when I have citizens come to me that would like to see the growth and the progress and the less tax burden that's on them as, as property owners, when 83% of Paulding County taxes are paid by the homeowners, which is different from other counties. So, you know, doing the right thing, um, my wife and I don't agree on what the right thing is and we live in the same house together, have it for 40 years. So, you know, I, I, I've talked to a lot of citizens and I know it can be different with different commissioners and whatever post you're in, but apparently the right thing in your post is way different than the right thing in post one. There'd be lots of.
Well.
Wonder why?
I appreciate your comments. Some of that's correct. We did vote for a $3 million bond in the 70s. But if the people wanted the airport, they would have voted for the bond. They voted for the bonds on the forest and different things. So if they wanted it, they would have voted for the bonds. They didn't want it, they voted against it. I understand the population's changed, but, um, there's been a canvassing throughout this county on over 10,000 doors. And when you get to post two, of which I represent, the percentage is higher, but it's not that much lower in post one. Not at all. In fact, I may have this wrong, so I apologize if I do, but, um, it's, um, it's within about 10%. And, um, let's just take it back to just a simpler process. Let's just take it back to promises made. Promises kept or promises broken. Let's just, let's just keep it on that. Let's don't worry about anything else. Leadership in this county from this Board of Commissioners, not sitting here, prior board, Chamber of Commerce, other leadership roles in the county, Chairman of the Airport Authority, promised the citizens of Paulding County no commercialization of that airport. They've promised them, I don't care what changes, it doesn't give us the right to break the promise of what we made to the people. And I'm, it's easy for me to stand on that ground that the citizens of this county were promised no commercialization when that General Aviation Airport was built and designed for General Aviation. That's what, that's what happened. And here we are today. That doesn't give us the right to break those promises. And I, we need to help support and keep, keep the promises that were made. I understand the economy changes, but that doesn't give us the right to do things wrong because the econ, the economy's tough. We just have to push through it. We do the right thing, this county will be blessed. I can tell you, my view is, you bring commercialization out there, you're not going to lessen the tax burden that the citizens are here now. It's just not going to happen. They're not going to get something in the mail 10 years and say, hey, your taxes are going to go down because we've got commercialization, we brought these businesses in. And, um, I'm just asking you to do the right thing, keep the promises that were, were made to the people of this county. Number two, discuss action to adopt Resolution 14 dash 30 for adopting new procedures for tax refund requests.
Commissioners, this is a, as, as y'all are aware, the governing authority of the county has the legal obligation to consider tax refund requests. And since about 1992, through statutory authorization, this board has delegated that authority to the Paulding County Board of Tax Assessors. Effective July 1, 2014, the General Assembly made several revisions to the tax refund statute. And what this resolution does is it just changes those procedures and gets them up to speed with what the changes were effective July 1, 2014. Still delegates that authority over to the Board of Assessors, but in the event there does come a case where state law requires this body to decide the case and not the assessors, the assessors will provide you with a recommendation on what they believe should happen in the case for your consideration, with y'all ultimately making the decision on it. Be happy to answer any questions. You want me to have one?
In English, what you said was, most tax refunds have to do with property, the bag you were brought around, which tax assessors handle that. What we said is, okay, if you determine that through whatever occurred, that they are owed a refund, they have the authority to give that refund. However, state law says that, let's say I appeal to them and I lose to the tax assessors, that as a citizen, I can appeal to the Board of Commissioners. And if that's so, if, if I do appeal, then the tax assessors are supposed to give us all the facts at bay.
In, close, close. When you deal with taxes, there's really two procedures. One is, I don't like how my, I don't like how my land has been valued. It's too high or it's too low. Most of them complain that it's too high. Then you would pursue a valuation appeal through the assessors, through the Board of Equalization. Then you go into Superior Court. There's another category of cases. There's another category of cases where there may be just flat-out errors that appear in the digest. Maybe they've said that you owe a hundred acres and you actually owe, you actually own ten. There would be an error there that we could easily correct. The authority to correct those errors is here, which you have delegated since the early nineties to the assessors for them to meet up. With the new revisions in the law, taxpayers can go straight into court. We're in, we are now an alternative to court, so if they can pursue, but they no longer have to stop here, they can go straight into court.
Number three, discuss action to authorize the Chairman to enter into a construction manager at risk, a C-MAR contract, PC Construction, for the new water treatment plant, river intake and pump station, reservoir intake, pump station at a cost of three hundred thousand and sixty dollars for pre-construction services. A GMP, GMP?
Guaranteed Max Price.
GMP for construction costs will be provided to the Board of Commissioners at a later date. Now we have Kelly Comstock, Program Manager for Richland Creek Water Supply.
Good morning, question?
Good morning.
Got a couple of slides here that I would like to show you. This is part of the presentation. Is this playing on the monitor?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my system.
We've got it on our screen.
Oh, you do, okay, excellent. It takes, man, okay. As Chairman indicated, Kelly Comstock with Brown Caldwell serving as the Program Manager for the Richland Creek Water Supply Program. And today I'd like to brief you on a few updates for the program and then discuss the agenda item that's, that's in front of you. If you recall, the Richland Creek Water Supply Program consists of five primary elements: the dam and reservoir itself that's located in northern Paulding County, an intake and river pump station that's located on the Edward River, a raw water pipeline, this is a large forty-eight inch pipeline, that will convey water from the river, that will fill the new reservoir. And then at the reservoir site, there will be a water treatment plant, as well as a pump station that pulls water out of the reservoir into the water treatment plant. And since this facility is located at the northern part of Paulding County, there will be several distribution system improvements to be able to bring the water that's produced from this facility down to the southern part of the county as well. So far, work that's, that's taken place recently on the project includes the final design associated with the two pump stations, as well as the water treatment plant. Arcadis was authorized back in October to proceed with final design, and they are currently working on the thirty percent design for the water treatment plant and the two intakes and pump stations. We indicated previously that we would begin the procurement process for a design-build contract for that forty-eight inch raw water line that will run from the river to the reservoir site. An RFP has been issued, and contractors currently are preparing their bids and proposals for that, and those bids are due on December first of, of this year. Like to announce that the rcrwater.com website is active. It went active on October twentieth with a great deal of information associated with the project. So far, we've had one hundred and ninety visitors since the site went active, and on average, people are visiting about five pages per visit, which is a pretty, pretty good number. On this website, there are frequently asked questions, there's information about all of the program components, and there's also a place where people can submit questions if they have a specific question that they'd like to have answered, and they can also sign up for an email distribution list so that they will be notified when new information is, is posted to the website. So in terms of today's agenda item, I'd wanted to begin by just defining what a C-MAR contract is. It's a contract that's called a construction manager at risk, and it's a contractor that is selected based on experience, qualifications, and other factors, including cost. And they will have a direct contractual relationship with Paulding County. Paulding County also has a direct contractual relationship with the designer, Arcadis. But the essence of the C-MAR is instead of waiting until the design is a hundred percent complete to acquire the contractor, you bring the contractor on early during the process, and they're allowed to give input on how to construct facilities to make them the most cost-effective as possible, and to give input on how to schedule the different improvements that will take place within the project site, and give the contractor's perspective so that, so that the design once produced is much more easy to implement. Another great benefit is that early on in the design process, the contractor is actually able to establish a guaranteed maximum price, a price ceiling which the, the value will not go over. That allows the county to move forward with financing much earlier on because you don't have to wait until the end of design to figure out how much it's going to cost. You're going to get an understanding of what the cost will be early on in the process. The procurement that took place for the C-MAR contractor, an RFP was issued, and it included evaluation points for qualifications, experience, the project approach, and cost. The county received eight different proposals from nationally recognized C-MAR contractors, a very high number of respondents to this program, a lot of interest in the industry associated with it. The selection committee decided that they could not select directly from the eight proposals that were received, but three of them really stood out, and they wanted to have further discussions with those. So they shortlisted to three companies. Those three companies were Haskell Lane, Pitts Galley Construction, and Hewitt Construction. The selection committee then brought each of, each of those teams in to be able to have a conversation. They, the selection committee gave them a series of questions, they came in with written responses and basically interacted with the selection committee and addressed their, their concerns. Following the rating process, which as I mentioned included costs, or included points for cost, qualifications, experience, and project approach, Pitts Galley Construction was selected as, as the C-MAR contractor.
I got a question.
Yes.
My information says that PC Construction was selected, not the same?
That's the same, yes. Pitts Galley Construction is PC.
So James just couldn't spell Pitts Galley.
We wanted to clarify, to, to let you know their true name. They, they do shorten it because it's obviously a lot easier to, but yes, it is, is the same company. A little bit about PC Construction or Pitts Galley Construction, they're a one hundred percent employee-owned contractor headquartered in Burlington, Vermont. They're ranked in the top fifty water wastewater contractors in Engineering News Record, who produces rankings every year. And they have experience with numerous similar-sized water treatment plant and intake pump station projects throughout the southeast United States. They're very highly qualified, their technical approach was top-notch, and, and so it would turn out they actually had the lowest pre-construction costs associated with the three shortlisted firms. So the selection was, was quite easy. They have local experience throughout the metro Atlanta area, and one key project to highlight is that they did serve as a C-MAR on the Gwinnett County Yellow River Water Resources Center. This project has been brought online within the last few years. And key to point out is that the project manager for that facility, which is a much larger facility than, than the Richland Creek Program, that, that facility is about a two-hundred-and-seventy-million-dollar facility, that same project manager will serve as project manager on this project. So they're bringing a top, top-notch team to Paulding County to be able to serve as the C-MAR. So their scope during pre-construction, as I mentioned, will be to work with the water treatment plant pump station designer, who's Arcadis, and to develop a design and a guaranteed maximum price. They will develop design submittals, Arcadis will have the thirty and sixty percent and ninety percent levels. Those will go to the county for review. In parallel with that, the, the C-MAR contractor will be establishing what the GMP will be at each level, so that we can maintain and make sure that we, we stay within the, the maximum price for, for the project. Once the thirty percent GMP is established, the, the process of securing additional funding can be pursued, and the design can be developed throughout the remaining part of the design to stay within that budget. The pre-construction services cost is three hundred thousand and sixty dollars, and as I indicated, of the three shortlisted firms, this is the lowest of the three for, for pre-construction costs. During construction, PC will serve as the general contractor, meaning they will do all project components, they, they will basically provide all insurance, they will provide all oversight, all bonding associated with the work, and they will be able to break up the project into smaller pieces and allow competitive bidding of the different areas. So for example, the electrical system may have high voltage power associated with it, forty-one sixty, and they may bid that out as a separate package, and they may carve out a smaller section, say for the admin building and, and the maintenance building, that may be more of a typical two-twenty, one-ten type of electrical current associated with it, that a Paulding County-type contractor would be able to perform. So by doing that, they'll be able to carve out the work that would actually be amenable to local Paulding County companies as well.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
When you say competitively bidding, are you talking about through the formal process that the county goes through?
Yes, they have to follow a formal process where they advertise the package, receive bids associated with it, and then, and then award those, and then award those packages. That is a requirement with some of the loan funding that you have received from GPA, is that you have to follow a competitive procurement associated with it. And it, as was indicated previously, the GMP will come before the board as, as an agenda item in the future for future approvals. So all that is being approved right now is the pre-construction services cost of three hundred thousand and sixty dollars. As we look to the overall program, as we mentioned, we're currently in the design phase. If you look at everything that, that's taking place, right now you've got everything that's highlighted in gray there, the reservoir designer, the pump station designer, and the water treatment plant designer is busy working on the designs in those areas. The blue highlighted area shows, the light blue highlighted area shows where the C-MAR contractor will be engaged during the design. And as I mentioned previously, on December first, we will be getting proposals in from the design build team for the raw water pipeline. If you look at the overall next steps for the program, the reservoir design will proceed to a hundred percent. It's anticipated that that will go into permitting the end of first quarter or beginning of second, second quarter next year. Will go, then go through a process of permitting with the Georgia State Dams Program. For the river intake pump station, the plant and the reservoir intake pump station, the designer will work alongside the C-MAR contractor to determine what the thirty percent GMP price is, and at that point, the cost decision will be made to finalize the size of the improvement that will take place in terms of your initial capacity. As the Raftelus study has shown you, from a financial perspective, moving towards eighteen MGD initial level of, of capacity is the most advantageous long-term for, for the county for implementation from a financial perspective. And then the raw water pipeline DB procurement will be moving in, in parallel to that. If you look at the overall long-term schedule, we anticipate a large amount of design activity throughout twenty fifteen. Things that have to be competitively bid will be bid towards the latter part of twenty fifteen, and then you're looking at several years' worth of construction. The largest construction piece is being the reservoir and the water treatment plant, and obviously everything has to be phased properly so that when you're ready, when the reservoir is ready to start receiving water, the raw water pump station and pipeline is in place to be able to transfer the water from, from the, from the river to fill that. And then obviously, once the plant comes online, the reservoir is full to be able to have water to, to treat in the facility. And then on the backside, the distribution system improvements, including the larger pipelines that need to go down into the southern part of county, of the county are in place to be able to support the, the flow coming from the facility. That's all I've prepared. Any, if there are any questions?
From a layman's standpoint, and had the privilege of working with another civil engineer eight years ago, Scott Green, taught me everything I know about civil engineering. Just got to get that in for you, Scott. From a layman's standpoint, Kelly, if you didn't have a C-MAR, you can maybe bulk up your, your water department at, at the county level, maybe James hires three experts, and they try to do their, the same thing that a C-MAR would do, maybe at a less cost, but it'd be like a homeowner trying to build their own house without the expert knowledge of a, of a contractor. You're trying to get all the subcontractors yourself rather than allowing somebody that really knows the field. Is that a simple way to look at it, or is that incorrect?
Well, it's, it's partially correct. The, the big advantage is you get the contractor involved during the design process, and you understand what the cost is going to be much earlier on. So for example, if, if you didn't do a C-MAR and you did the conventional approach where it's design, bid, build, you would allow the designer to design it to a hundred percent, and then you would take it out and bid it. And if you found that it was way too expensive at that point, then you're forced to go back and redesign it and to be able to reduce the cost. The benefit of a GMP is you're establishing in parallel with the, the design exactly what it's going to cost. So for example, in the home example that you gave, if you wanted to build a, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, and you did the design and then went to a contractor and said, you know, I'd like to build this home, and you find out that it's actually going to cost you three hundred thousand dollars, then you have to go back and redesign the whole thing. Bringing this, the C-MAR onboard allows you to know exactly what it's going to cost early on in the process. We get to thirty percent and we see that it's too expensive, then we look at making changes in the design, bring it down, so that when it's, when the design is complete, it's in line with what the expected budget is. Yes.
Now, they're going ahead with the design of the eighteen?
That's correct. That is what they're doing. And so one of, one of the decision points, when this thirty percent GMP is established, is we'll look at the cost of the, of the treatment plant and the associated other project components, and, and make sure that that comes in where it should be in terms of overall financing. But if that number is too high, then one of the things that may have to be looked at is maybe not initially doing the eighteen, but looking at the twelve and basically eighteen. All indications from a financial aspect, as you know, the, the cost of capacity of the treatment plant is relatively small compared to the cost of the reservoir, compared to the cost of the pump station, which will be sized for a higher flow to be able to pull off during, during peak flow periods in the river. So going from five to twelve to eighteen at the water plant is a relatively small number.
All right. Now, what, what we're actually approving here is PC, if I agree, that's it here, so PC Construction, we're literally hiring them as our general contractor.
That's correct.
We're agreeing to pay them three hundred thousand dollars to participate in pre-design. But once it's designed, they'll be the ones that construct it.
That's correct, for the water plant and the, the pump station and intakes. And that's why qualifications-based selection is very important, making sure they have the qualifications. We also got from all of the people, the proposers, what their overhead rates would be during construction. So we know what their cost will be during the construction side of things.
And y'all assumed y'all measured that in.
Yes. We, we actually came up with a cost number that took into account sort of anticipated future costs of these improvements, what their, their cost during construction would be, as well as their, as well as their upfront cost. So for example, one of the other proposers, they weren't shortlisted, but they had a very low pre-construction services cost of two hundred thousand, but their percentage during construction was more than twice that of PC. So when you looked at their overall cost number, it was much higher. So we wanted to make sure we got the lowest number, the best number long-term for, for the county.
And at what point will, will we reach this thirty percent more? What's the estimated time?
They're, they're estimating to, to be there by the end of the year, so we should, we should have something known by the end of the year for, for that.
Okay. So then that's when the contract will come back and say, the design guaranteed max is whatever number it is.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, as all of you have seen, Kelly has been a godsend for this project. I mean, they have done a phenomenal analysis that he went through, the selection of these firms was incredibly impressive. The questions that he put together, he doesn't give himself enough credit in front of you, but he has been fabulous to have on this, and y'all did a great job awarding the Program Manager Brown Caldwell. They've been great.
Who was, who was in on the selection committee for PC, Kelly?
We did not, we did not participate in the selection committee. We facilitated, provided information, but the selection committee was made up entirely Paulding County staff.
We kept asking them for their opinion, and they wouldn't give it to us. They put together the financial part of it. Myself, Chuck Ramp participated, our county engineer Bruce Coyle, James Spiel on the county side. You know, we, we continued to ask them, which one would you hire? And we couldn't get them to answer that question until we had already made the selection, and they showed us their shortlist, and I think we had two out of the same three. So, you know, it was, it was a learning process for us. C-MAR is not new to Paulding County. The parkhouse in front of us was constructed using a C-MAR. And if you remember, when we started doing... And if you remember, when we started doing Burn Hickory Park years ago, it sort of went off the rails and, and, and hit the skids for about a year. Commissioner Barnett came on, we, that was the very first time we'd used a C-MAR. It's a very, very good tool to, to establish that your costs are going to be on the front end. And you'll get the 30% design, as Kelly mentioned, before the end of the year. It'll come back to y'all to approve. You will also have to approve the 60%. You won't see that until sometime next year, and then the 90%, you know, sometime probably late, late first quarters of next year. But all three of those will come back to y'all if you continue to recertify those GMPs.
Okay.
Now, yeah, the, even though we approved those GMPs, the actual bidding process will not start until after 100% is done.
That's correct.
And then that's, then those bidings is to determine where you're going to be. So when you, now, the fee we're paying them, is this through 30% or does this take us?
It's all pre-construction services, so.
It's all, this is the amount we will pay them up until the point that we say it's going to cost $20 million, whatever the number is. And yes, we have the funding, and if you can build it for $20 million, you'll build it, and then you start getting the contracts back. And we'll have to, Board of Commissioners will have to approve all the contracts, just for instance, the high voltage work, Board of Commissioners will have to approve that. The actual physical construction of a facility, I mean, the actual building, the Board of Commissioners will have to approve. So the Board of Commissioners will be a part of this, but what this gives you, this establishes your budget.
Yes, and a roadmap of, of maintaining. That's right. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. There's no executive session, no, no.
Yes, sir. If, if you'll entertain this, Michael Justice is going to come up, and I'll, while he's, while he's getting set up. He's not going to show you all the photographs that I saw. It's quite disturbing. You know, we recently finished, we used cost dollars to upgrade White Oak Park, and there were some incredibly well-done facilities that were placed out in the park. We just have opened that up just a few weeks ago, and it's unfortunate, but it suffered some severe vandalism over the weekend. The front entrance sign to the park was, was ripped out of the concrete monument, stolen. The new facility that were just open, we had a Boy Scout and Cub Scout event out there Saturday where the kids were taught gun safety, they had a turkey shooting shot, BB guns and such, and it was, it was a great event. Got a lot of positive feedback on the new facilities. I got here Monday morning, and we got some not-so-positive feedback from what happened after that. Sometimes it looks like probably Saturday night the vandal struck. Michael Justice.
Thank you for your time. I'm going to get a little red-faced on this one. I'm sorry. Calm me down if you need to. You, you won't see the pictures, and I apologize for that. I'll get them to you. As I was leaving, coming up here this morning, I got the call about the sign. So to verify, did they really steal the park entrance sign? I left my office, went out there, left the rest of the stuff on my desk, and yes, the sign was gone. You know, parents, if you see a sign that's the size of this podium in your garage or in your child's bedroom, I'm going to assume it was teenagers that did this. They do not have permission to have that. You know, let us know, please. As Mike mentioned, we finished the renovations out there, that park in May, probably a year and a half-long project, roughly a half-million dollars. One of those projects was the addition of a pavilion, had some additional restroom to serve the people that go out there. That park has become probably the most used park in our system. It's used by walkers, joggers, the people of all ages, picnickers, it's used for group gatherings, you know, all sorts of things. We kept it open for about five months before it's been destroyed. It just makes my stomach hurt. I got this call on Sunday, Sunday morning. We expect the trash cans to be turned over. We expect the picnic tables to be turned upside down and stacked and moved around, that sort of thing. That's a nuisance, you know? This is criminal damage. These restrooms, titians have been ripped from the walls, the sinks have been ripped from the walls, the plumbing has been ripped from the walls. It, it's just, it, it makes me sick. For what reason, I don't know. And, and, you know, when you think about it, it's their money, you know? They paid to have it done. It's built with cost dollars. And to destroy that and, and, and take that use away from the folks that, you know, the 99% of the folks that use the parks the way that they're supposed to, it's really disturbing to me. I, I, I don't call it vandalism, I call it criminal, you know? I hope that they're called, you know? I, I hope that when they are called, if it's possible, I hope that they're, after they pay their fines and whatever restitution that they're assigned to community service, and that community service is assigned, I simply hope we get the opportunity to, to put them to work in parks. You know, my park staff would love to, to tell them what goes into keeping those things maintained every day and to show them how it's done. And then I'd like for them to be permanently banned from any public park in Paulding County. It's a little extreme, I'm sorry, probably a little red-faced. It troubles me deeply that we, we go to these links to provide for, for everybody's enjoyment, and then a few decide that they're going to do something else with it, that there's no place for it. I appreciate your time. I'll get you those pictures. I apologize, and I know that it was just one more thing added to all this today.
Mr. Chairman, at the conclusion of what Mr. Justice has said, when this broadcast goes out, we will have a series of photographs that will come behind this speech, so that the viewing public sees what's been done to this facility, and hopefully, that information will come back. As you recall, there was damage to the veteran, not the veteran memorial, it was the 911 Memorial shortly after it was built, about a dozen years ago, and we were able to get that word out to the community, and those folks were called, and they came back and they did community service. So, well, we'll, we'll, we'll have those pictures as part of the presentation.
I apologize that I forgot to.
Another workplace, that old sign and then the damage was to the pavilion restroom.
That's correct. We're still finding it, we're still finding it, you know? There's no, there's 90 acres out there, you know, the sign may be in, in the bottom of one of the three links. I don't, you know? As we make the repairs, I'll give those numbers to you. I imagine this is going to, to reach at, at least $10,000 in repairs, I'm sure, you know, for whatever enjoyment these folks got out of it.
And because it's a repair, it can't be spent with cost dollars. It has to be spent with.
I believe that's correct. Is that correct, Tom? Yes, sir.
Do we have insurance through ACCG for vandalism or something like this?
Yes, sir. Everything was hard to make it accessible.
Which is $25,000?
About $25,000.
Black cameras up there.
That is, that was going to be the last thing Mike and I talked about yesterday. It's very unfortunate that we've gotten to a level where we have to put cameras up to, to deter activities, but that's going to become what we do there at White Oak as well.
Wendy, plan to have everything?
We're working on it now, working on it now. If you go out there, the new pavilion, it sounds unserviceable that the restrooms are not, you know? When you turn on the Mustang Drive from Highway 61, it'd be the big park on the right, there's no sign up there anymore. You know, that'll take a little walk to get that done. So we hope to have them open and serviceable in the next year. I apologize again for the pictures. That was my fault, but I will make sure this should go.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you for your time.
There's no executive session, no citizens wishing to speak. This is Veterans Day. It started this morning at 11:00. We may have missed part of that ceremony, but please thank the Veterans Day. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Set in.
All papers stay out.